Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council on Eclipse Day, August 21st, 2017, and ask our city recorder to please call and roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counselor President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera and Counselor Anderson.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we have the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to let people know we'll make one slight adjustment with the permission of counsel to our agenda, and that will be under Special Orders of Business. We will have a brief update on today's celestial events. Any objections? All right. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So that does take us to Special Orders of Business. I wanted to give Counselor President Parsons and I think it was Counselor Freeman and Counselor Reed who were down at the park a chance to talk a little bit about today's -- there we go, the lights are back on -- the weekend events down there. And then I was given some information from the Salem Kaiser Volcanoes on their event that I can share with you all. They have more complete press updates that I believe have been given to the Kaiser Times. With that, Counselor President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a whirlwind last few weeks, but we were able to pull it off. Kaiser Rapids Park was filled with some amazing people from nine, 10 different countries all over the United States, and they were respectful and friendly and took great care of our park. I want to thank a lot of people that made this happen. I want to just go through this list if I may, some of the sponsors that really helped. So Ridge Ford with Windomer Real Estate, Les Schwab, Kaiser Vision Clinic, Earth Tech Landscape Solutions, Quick Lane Tire and Auto, Kaiser Elks, J.C.'s Pizza, Brian and April McVeigh at Caldwell Banker, Oregon Forest Custom Tile, an Odd Mo's Pizza, Building Materials Bargain Center, and Battle Storm Functional Tires and Defense. So these guys all paid money, put banners on the park for everybody to see when they came down because they were very, very supportive of the event. I could not have done this event, though, without a few people who were totally amazing, and that's Ellen Barker and David Loudon, who spent hours, literally hours, staking out what we thought was a two-day project into five days in the grids of the campsites, 25 by 25 and 25 by 50 with a 12-foot buffer. I'll never forget any of that. But it was amazing. And every time they painted, the wind blew it away. And so it was hard, you know, so they just staked everything. So it took a little longer, but they were there. We all got averaged about three to four hours of sleep in a 24-hour period, but it was well worth it today, the culmination in the people's faces and how happy they were. So special thanks to those two guys. And then I want a special thanks to Counselor Reed and Freeman, who were my right hand and my left hand and were right there, especially Laura. I mean, she just like, what can I do? And she loved trash pickup. I think that was her favorite thing. So they were great. The Kaiser Police, a special thanks to them. They were right there all the time, just driving through. And we had no issues, that I know of, no issues. It was amazing. They were friendly. And so we had the bike guys, we had the motorcycle, we had everybody there. And they just, once in a while, drove through and made sure. Kaiser Fire, same thing. We had, you know, the only people who had fires in the fire pits were local people who, in their backyard and on the beach. So our guys did really well in obeying that. So I want to read some -- we had a guestbook that we passed around some of the campsites, and there's going to be some on the foundation page. But I just want to read a couple of things of what these people said about our park, because I just almost brought me to tears with some people said. This couple said, "Thank you. We're here from Austin, Texas for our 50th wedding anniversary." I thought that was pretty amazing. "Thank you, Kaiser Parks. You were so organized and friendly. This is my sixth eclipse. Can't wait for totality." I thought that was pretty cool. "Thank you for putting the camp together. It was easy, friendly, helpful, welcoming. The area is beautiful. What a lovely treat and life experience. This is a beautiful park. Thank you for your wonderful hospitality." So people loved Kaiser Rapids Park. They were in awe at what we have accomplished over the last 10 years at that park. So I couldn't be more prouder of our Parks Department for really putting that together. Clint Holland put together some amazing concerts. People were thrilled with having those free concerts and the music there, and the locals enjoyed it. But we had Brazil, Australia, Yugoslavia, Germany, Spain, Mexico, Canada. I don't want to miss anybody, but --
England, Ireland.
England, Dublin, Ireland, Japan.
The United States.
And the United States, of course. Well, Texas, as you saw here, we had some --
Another country.
We had Alaska, Texas, Washington, California, Utah, Oklahoma, I can't remember what else. We tried to find out where all these people were from, so we'd have some idea. We had some backpackers, we had some bikers that were biking the trail. So we had a different bunch of people that were there. And I know I'm probably forgetting people, and hopefully Counselor Reed and Freeman will help me with that because I don't want to forget anybody. But I took a nap instead of writing out that report, so please forgive me on that one. But again, I want to thank the Parks Foundation for sticking with this project to the end. So I think that's all I have. I'll let Counselor Reed and Freeman speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who wants to -- who's up?
I'll take --
No, go.
Okay, great. Okay, so I just wanted to thank a few more people. The Parks Foundation was phenomenal in manning the check-in booth. Well, that's just at the event itself. They planned this very well. And Marlene was really an excellent organizer and had thought of everything and had organized everything and was just very, very impressive. I'd also like to thank CERT. CERT was on there 24/7, on site 24/7, and they did their due diligence, and they were patrolling, and they were providing first aid, and they were an excellent resource. And it's an honor to have such a wonderful community organization at our disposal. And so a big thank you to them. We had several volunteers who worked multiple shifts. Carla Schultheis, Bob Parsons, who did an amazing job, Maria Kelly, who was also there quite a lot, Jim Taylor there most of the weekend, Kevin Dial, amazing parker, and amazing in many ways, Kristy Sears, Judy Leckti, Jeremy Turner for both volunteering and for coordinating our webpage and helping us get the word out and being our technical support, and he was fantastic. And also Kim and Kathy for just being there as much as they could to support it. We just really appreciate that. And also, a big thank you to the chamber for providing signage that made it easy to find Kaiser Rapids, which is not easy even with GPS, especially with GPS. And so that signage that they provided really helped. And El Patron also was a vendor and provided some great food there as well. And mostly, you know, thank you to the neighbors for their patience and support. There was a lot of crazy stuff going on, and we had a lot of neighbors come in to just see what was going on. And by and large, the neighbors were just very supportive, very welcoming, and very patient with what was an exciting weekend. So we thank you as well. So that, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot one more.
Quick, before she --
Before I forget. So we had these quads all signed up because being out in the field, the quads were a lot easier to get around on, you know, than trying to walk, all of that. And at the last moment, it fell through because of liability insurance. And so I called my friend, and he goes, "What can I do?" And I said, "You have quads, right?" And he said, "Yes." He brought his motorhome down. He brought his -- was that a bobcat? Whatever that thing was?
Wildcat.
Wildcat something, and two quads. And then, not only did he do that, but then he helped the entire weekend. And he would come up and take people to their campsites on the quads. And then he let us use the quads, which was amazing because I learned how to ride one. Now I'm addicted. It was awesome. So special thanks to Tom and Trudy Tealy for coming through with that. They were amazing, and they really saved the day on that one. So I forgot about that. It was special thanks to them. Thank you.
Counselor Freeman?
They were on the top of my list because I know Marlene wanted to give Tom and Trudy a huge thank you. I appreciate that. It was a fun ride in that wildcat thing. It was like some out-of-space movie thing, but it was awesome.
It was awesome.
The goodie bags for all the restaurants and merchants that put coupons, and the Parks Foundation that put the goodie bags together. I know the campers really appreciated that. They said, "Wow, we've never gone to an event, and we actually got a little goodie bag." And they had eclipse glasses in there, so that was really nice. Thanks to the neighbors as well. Probably, I think, the most innovative was the gentleman on 15th who made some showers, actually, for the campers. And they were out of -- it was cedar, and he had a little shelf in there. And for the ladies, he had a little mirror, so we could actually, you know, if you were taking a shower, you could, you know, look at yourself. But the water, I thought, oh, it's just lukewarm water. But Marlene and I actually stuck our hand in there, and it was fabulous. So they went around and advertised, and a lot of people took showers. So they were very innovative, and some neighbors had embraced the event with the new path through there, I think was awesome for our campers and then our neighbors. And it connected them to the big toy and the dog park. And everyone that just came out for parking, everyone was cooperative. The sand volleyball fields were, I think, pretty much nonstop with people playing volleyball. We had those volleyballs available for everyone. And just a lot of thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So thank you to Marlene. And Laura, you spent your whole weekend there, and I was fortunate to pop in and out. So I appreciate that. So good job, you guys.
So I just want to wrap up. And there'll be more information as we get the numbers. The objective, aside from having a phenomenal opportunity for people to experience the full totality of the solar eclipse, was also to raise money for our Parks Foundation, and that goal was achieved. And that's going to go to the matching grant program, so we'll be able to use those dollars, stretch those dollars like we do, to help our community enjoy those benefits for years to come. That's what Kaiser does best, is come together for a goal, and we'd absolutely -- it was stellar, shall we put it that way. So we'll get a report later, or the Parks Foundation will come and talk to us as well. Is that correct about the dollars and how that will be?
Yeah, I don't want to speculate, but I do know that we had close to 30,000 just in registrations alone for the campsites because we sold out, so.
Fantastic.
It's going to be a good number. It's going to be great.
All right. And it's all great. On the other end of Shimawa and up into Kaiser Station, the volcanoes had the very first ever Major League sporting event in history of Major League sports to have play suspended due to the solar eclipse. It was apparently Jerry Walker's dad who had the idea, and they embraced it. Major League Baseball embraced it, the Giants embraced it. And I am so proud today to say the Kaiser community embraced it. We, as a community, I've always celebrated being a part of this community. There is something to celebrate every day, but I got to tell you, folks, I could not be prouder today to be a member of the community of Kaiser. The way we opened our hearts and our community to visitors literally from around the world, the hospitality and warmth that we showed to people who were here, I am so proud and thankful that everyone here was a part of something that was much bigger than ourselves. We sent people away knowing who Kaiser is, knowing where it is, and wanting to come back because they had such a wonderful time. Jerry Walker sent me some information about the folks that were here at Volcano Stadium, and he said that there were people here from all six habited continents, 34 states plus Washington, D.C., 11 countries including Norway, Italy, Japan, South Africa, England, Colombia, Colombia, South America, Sydney, Australia, the Dominican Republic, Thailand, and Canada, and that was three of the provinces. And it was absolutely phenomenal being in the presence of almost 6,000 people and experiencing that beautiful celestial event of the total eclipse. I now understand why people want to be in the zone of totality. It is amazing. They'll also have additional numbers on the event itself. NASA was here all weekend. They had representatives talking about not only the eclipse but also other programs NASA is involved with. What a great way to encourage our young people to get involved in the sciences. Many of them are inspired by things like this, and then they go and find out, "I can do that, too." And that's our next generation of space explorers and scientists. So I appreciate them coming out. I appreciate the Giants and the volcanoes for helping make this amazing event happen. And again, we thank CERT was out there. They had all of their staff there for the volcanoes. And Jerry took them all aside afterwards and, with a great deal of emotion and pride, told them how proud he was of all of them and the work that they did to make sure that everyone was welcome and taken care of at the Eclipse Fest, the Brew Fest, and the total eclipse at the park. So again, Kaiser, well done. We've just welcomed the world. City Manager?
Well, and if I could mention, we also celebrated the eclipse here at City Hall. And for about 30 minutes, both sides of the eclipse, we shut the doors so that the employees could enjoy it. And Dan made popcorn and his commercial popcorn maker, and Tracy brought moon pies, and we sat outside and watched the eclipse, and it was great.
Okay.
So it was really fun. But anyway, it was quite an event, and hopefully I won't be alive to see another one because I know that they're like stretched a long ways apart. So if I am alive, then I'll be really old.
We'll have to travel.
Really, really old. Yeah, that's right. I mean, here. Very good.
So I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot more about this, but I want to make sure we celebrate this achievement today and celebrate each other as well as --
I put my microphone back on, hadn't I? I almost got something from the back. I want to make sure we took a moment to celebrate and thank and just reflect on what we've been through today in a very positive way. We don't always get to do that, so yay, Kaiser. So I'd like to move now, then, into our public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have three public hearings tonight. Do we have a Parks report? Oh, I'm going to back up then. Okay. I'm looking at you, Matt, and I just went right on past you.
He was just going, "Oh."
He's like, "Dang, I did. Committee reports." So we'll go to committee reports, and then we'll go to public testimony. So Matt, why don't you come on down and give us the Parks report?
Well, good morning. I'll start off with some fake news. According to Inside Edition, Salem actually stopped the baseball game, not Kaiser. So thank you to Inside Edition for screwing up that story.
Tell me your Google map.
For the record, Matt Lawyer, Kaiser Parks Board. And I just also want to reiterate the appreciation of the Kaiser Parks Board for the tremendous amount of work that was done by the Kaiser Parks Foundation and all the volunteers that was able to make this weekend's event as successful as it was. Was down there a few times with my family. My son figured out a way to play in the sandbox with a broken leg. Hopefully, he doesn't make a pearl in there, but we'll see. The sweat.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, got it.
So I'm going to go over the last meeting real quick. You know, for kind of a meeting, we found a lot of stuff on there. We had a little bit of controversy. We did have two people participate as interested citizens. Rhonda Rich explained her concern as it related to the fire hazards over the weekend. And as we know, we had no issues, with the exception of before it started. And huge shout-out to the Kaiser Fire Department for getting that taken care of right away. Was approached by former city councillor and Parks Board member, Richard Walsh, as it related to some work that his son had done many years ago at the sand volleyball courts that have now been replaced, which brought up an interesting issue. As Kaiser's only 34 years old, we haven't reached the point yet where we're replacing things. We've had parks be renamed, but never much by way of things that have been dedicated by name be replaced. And so it brought us to an interesting impasse as we're thinking about or moving forward with naming the new sand volleyball courts and shelter for the Schneider family that's putting that up. And so we have a couple creative solutions we're going to look at to hopefully accommodate and memorialize the work that Michael Walsh did, but also take into account the tremendous amount of work and money that's been provided by the Schneider family. So we're looking forward to that. We did move forward with the recommendation to name the volleyball courts, and it will be named the Hans and Vicki Schneider Family Volunteers and contributors, Kirk Moysen, Jerry Nutbrock, Ricardo Bissaril, I apologize if I said that wrong, and Randy Miller. So that will be on the plaque for that facility. Got an update from the eclipse event, and obviously it happened. The moon didn't fall out of the sky, no major catastrophes. We will be meeting with the city council on September 11th. We'll visit Country Glen Park, Little League Fields, Mike Whitman Park, Claggett Creek, Carlson Skate Park, and the Rickman Community Gardens. Two of those are actually going to be areas where we put grant dollars in, and you'll get to see some more of the outcome there. So we're excited to do that. And the other thing that kind of came up was whether or not we would cancel our September 12th board meeting. And it was originally recommended to do so. However, I objected to that and for a few different reasons. One is, we just got the fee. It's done, right? It's official. We're moving forward. What we didn't have that the police had was immediate measurable deliverables. The police came in and said, "We're getting five cops, and that's it," right? We knew the equipment. We knew all the things associated with getting those five officers. But the parks was a little bit, quite a bit less nuanced. And so what we're doing now is we're working with staff to take the long list of deferred maintenance items and operations issues that have been sitting in abeyance for heaven knows how many years. We're taking that information, and then we're taking the information from the survey, and we're going to marry those together. The goal, then, is to create a good list for the first six months, the first year, first 18 months, and really sort of spell this out in terms of the amount of projects and the amount of dollars it's going to take to make this happen. Part of that, and what you'll see in front of you, is two potential handouts. There are going to be signs, and these signs are going to be part of the community engagement process. I know staff is working really hard to get their consolidated list to me and the subcommittee from the Parks Board so that we can put that together and hopefully meet with the first group of interested citizens that have said, "Yes, I want to be part of this adventure." I know that I've got at least five people outside of the Parks Board that have committed wanting to be part of this. I am reaching out and hoping that if there are people that have concerns either way, to reach out to me, either via Facebook or through the city council or through the city email address, and get ahold of me so we can get this going soon. The whole point is, hopefully, on September 12th, we can sit down and see the very first list of these items that have to move forward. Yes, I was kind of at the front of this whole thing when this thing happened, but as a ratepayer and somebody affected by this, I personally don't feel comfortable with taking a dime out of my pocket or anybody's pocket in here before we know exactly what it is we can look at within six months to a year. And I think we're going to get there. In fact, I know that we're going to get there, and I'm committed to having a pretty good list by the last council meeting in October, so that the council knows this is what you can expect before we ever collect a dime. It's a huge task. I'm thankful I'm bald because I wouldn't have any hair left because I'll be pulling it out over a while. But it's something that's very, very important to myself. It was very important to the Public Works Director, who spoke up and said, "Look, if we wait till October, November timeframe, we're not going to have answers by the time we need to go to bid on some of these things." And we just cannot wait and continue to belabor the needs of the park because we don't want to hold a meeting. And so after some contention and back and forth, the board unanimously decided to hold a September 12th meeting so that we can get to work and get those things done. I do expect at least one meeting, possibly two, if I can get it done in August with that small group of folks. Again, anybody that wants to participate in there, I don't care. Anybody, any age, you know, kids have an idea, you know, that's going to be taken with a certain amount of leverage. And anybody that wants to come in and have this conversation, I think it's really, really important. That's pretty much it. I do have two different signs. So Counselor Herrera brought up, you know, how are we going to get the outreach? How are we going to get this out to folks and get people participating? So we created what we're calling the Parks Nerds Signs. And this will go, one of these signs will go in each of the parks in the city of Kaiser, with the hope that those individuals that know their own park, that are intimate with their own park, can come in and see that and say, "Yeah, this is something I want to bring up." Now, again, we're nuanced here, right? So the Parks Master Plan specifies everything that's supposed to happen within that park, but that master plan hasn't been looked at in eight years. So we need to kind of be a little bit flexible, but also be realistic with what we have in the master plan, also understanding that we're talking maintenance and operations first and foremost, I think. I would imagine that that's a big chunk of what we need to get done in the first couple of years, you know, with the skate park being a very, very heavy priority. So if, you know, if you all want to take a straw poll on these signs, I'll be happy to get the feedback back to Bill and Robert so we can get these printed and put them in parks as soon as possible. But we've got a lot of work to do. I've appreciated all the effort so far, but myself, Kat Gainer, and if I had minutes, I can tell you who's in this thing. Myself, Kat Gainer, Dave Loudon, and I think there was one other, and I apologize if I forget. We're going to, excuse me, we're going to be on the subcommittee that we're going to kind of help this effort along. I'm not going to sit here and waste time looking for the name, but there's four of us from the Parks Board that are going to do it. And then hopefully, we can get as many participants from the city. Like I said, I've got four right now. One gal used to work with the city of Seattle's park system for many years, so she's got a lot of experience. I'm hoping for some naysayers. I really want some naysayers because I think that's going to help the process and be as transparent and helpful as possible. Sometimes when you get the people that don't like what you're doing, they help you see the forest for the trees and really stick the mirror in front of you and go, "Yeah, we need to do better on some things." So, you know, if we get a group full of happy-go-lucky, everybody's "Go Parks," you know, that's fine. But I want some naysayers, too. I think it's important for the process.
City Manager?
So three things. First off, just on that point, something I learned a long, long time ago in city manager school was, if you have two people in an organization that always think exactly the same, you don't need one of them.
Right.
So you need the naysayers. You need the points of view. In relation to this, I would suggest, as opposed to help us shape the future of this park, help shape the future of your parks. Because it's not just a park, the particular park that that citizen happens to be in at that particular moment. It's all of the parks. It's the park system. Also, Spanish, please.
Definitely.
So, great, great note. The idea was kind of pointing towards that Parks Nerd for that individual park, but I see your point, and I think it's well noted, and so I'll get that changed. In terms of the graphics, like I said, we did the kind of eye-catching Uncle Sam thing, but then that kind of had a negative undertone to it, too. So if folks don't want that, we can just go simply with the Kaiser logo, which is probably a little softer.
I like that. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a question. And Matt, you and I talk a lot about parks. So there's kind of a, and when you talk about a master plan, I'm wondering if we need an overview kind of of a master idea of how to go about achieving all of these conversations because, for example, we talked about the sports conversation. That's an ongoing project list that we've had, Madam Mayor, for a long time. And we want to get the sports people together and have a roundtable, if you will, and really get the ideas out there. That's almost a separate town hall. And then, of course, you've got this one you're kicking off with on the 12th that everyone's invited to. So I love the interaction and the engagement, for sure. I'm just wondering if there needs to be almost like a, this might be a bill question, but almost like a hierarchy of, obviously, we're starting with safety and maintenance, and then we're going, so that makes sense to me, and I'm not questioning it. But if we had an overview, people could see, "Oh, well, this is, we're starting with safety and maintenance," then there's a lot of questions. Are we going to get new parks? We're going to rename? What are we doing? So bringing those things into, almost like your formula of, with, of course, the athletics, I think that's important because we've talked about Kaiser Rapids and the athletics in the future, and we're shaping that now, even though we're not going to do it now. I totally get it. But I'd love to see a way that we can put a, almost like a master plan for the plan of how do we hit everybody's topics that are so important to so many people.
Yeah, I think the idea of a prioritization, and so by getting all the ideas out here, getting people's input, then the prioritization can happen after that, and that will give us -- us that game plan, if you will, on how we're going to proceed. But it's getting everything on the table first, so we know, we start putting them into order.
Especially because we have the matching grants we have to use, I don't want to lose that money that we have available. I know there's, you know, we need to move on some things to make sure we're in a timely manner with specific items, and I don't know what those are personally, I have them in my, you know, in my notes here and there, but it's an overall conversation, and I'd love to see us all be a part of that, so that we have some sort of method and order to it. And I love the idea of doing like a brainstorm in the first, and then let's maybe bring out the board and, you know, put some organization to it, so it's not so overwhelming, because I know it's a lot, Matt.
And I believe that's what the Parks Board with the September 12th is going to begin that process, and they're going to be the ones taking the lead on starting to put those pieces together, and then start bringing recommendations forward for us to consider if we need policy decisions. Am I correct on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and to follow up, you know, it's been very apparent from staff, they've been very direct in their responses as it comes to the prioritization of things, and safety is the number one concern, I think, from both Bill and Robert's perspective, as well as the board's perspective. It is important that we are good stewards of the SEC dollars and stuff that are there, however, there's other means that we can kind of work that, I think, a little bit to sort of pad the stats a little bit beforehand, payback. That's all new want stuff that I can let Tim play with, I'm not even going to get into the weeds on that one, but, you know, there's ways to do it, and I think that, you know, I think that there's a really good expectation that within 12 and 24 months, we can really start to have a very good conversation about the potential for new projects. But again, that's as if everything's happening the way they're supposed to, straight out the gate. You know, as far as how that money can shift to help out now, I don't know. Like I said, that's Tim and Chris and Bill, they can figure that all out, but we agree. I mean, you know, ultimately, we have a Parks Master Plan that's unfulfilled, and it has been unfulfilled for a very long time. The benefit of this is hopefully by our September 12th meeting, or maybe October realistically, you know, we can start having conversations about putting our grant program back in place, because we'll have the funding available for that. Now with the Kaiser Parks Foundation and their $30,000, you know, that's going to be things I think that are going to stimulate the opportunity for folks to bring in good projects for good SEC dollars. They're not going to be huge, you know, multi-hundred thousand dollar projects, maybe, but they're going to be projects that I think are going to start to kind of stimulate that. And once growth begins to happen, growth results growth. And I think that we're going to see that in the parks, we're going to see that with the efforts of the police and making our parks safer and vice versa. So it's a good question, I think it's certainly something that we're going to take into consideration, but I think it's also important to note that the survey results were pretty clear that maintenance and operations were very high above even the highest rated new amenity piece, so I think we have to be considerate of that data. You know, we have to have a starting point, and we have to have a goal, and I think being able to start doing the replacement, certain replacement pieces can be used for SECs, you know, old money, new money pots, I mean, there's, wow. There's ways to make things work, but there is SECs that can probably start moving, and we have a much better opportunity now than we have in a very, very long time to start making that happen, so.
But I think what I'm hearing is that we're going to get the what, and then the how will go into place.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
But we have to prioritize the what first, along the goals of safety, maintenance, and sustainability.
Right, and I just, I want, again, we want everybody to feel like there's a good plan. You know, the data's there, it just has to be crunched together, and we want to have a good plan and good set of deliverables, so that way we can move forward. That was the whole plan, maintain, match, and move forward, so.
Any other questions? All right, looking forward to the Parks Tours, that was one of my favorites. And thanks again for everything.
We have consensus, I think we kind of want to go with this one, is that allowed?
With this one, and then the change in language from your parks.
Okay.
So there's, and Spanish.
And do them in Spanish as well.
Yeah, Spanish and English.
I will be breaking out Google Translate. The cool part is, you do it once in Google Translate, and you do it back to make sure you didn't ask for banana.
Council Herrera would be happy to do that for you.
If I can get Council Herrera's attention, then that'd be great. I know he's been really, really busy doing a lot of stuff, so I'll see if I can reach out to him as well.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we get to go to public testimony. Thank you for your patience, sir. So this time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have three public hearings scheduled tonight. The Casa Amigos Restaurant and Cantina Liquor License Application, the proposed Kaiser Development Code text amendment, section 2.309 landscaping requirements, and the resolution adopting updates to the City of Kaiser representation in the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. With that, I do have one person sign up for public testimony, and that would be Mr. Dossler. So if you'll come on down, please, and just state your name and city of residence for the record. Thank you for joining us tonight.
My name's Robert Dossler. I live at 782 Cummings Lane in Kaiser. I've been here for 40 years. I've seen a lot of good things at Kaiser, I've seen some bad things, but, you know, we can't be satisfied with everything. But my main concern is, I know we have to have traffic flow out of Kaiser, but I'm really concerned with the lack of traffic control when it comes to lights. I don't know how many times I've sat at Dearborn and River Road for three or four minutes waiting to get across, and then I have to wait for two or three cars that run that light constantly. And that's not the only spot, that's the one I deal with a lot, but it seems like in the last year, we've had more and more, I mean, there hadn't been that many accidents, thank goodness, but we've had more and more people violating the law. And my concern is, I've been here 40 years, I've supported the fire department, I've supported the police department, and I've supported Kaiser Little League and Kaiser itself. But I think it's time, I don't know how many police officers we have in traffic, but I think it's time that we need to really concentrate on the violators on River Road. It's getting, it's really getting carried away. I've got two grandkids, and I don't dare let them ride their bikes over River Road. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of young kids too that ride their bikes, there's a lot of adults too that ride their bikes. But my main concern is, I don't know, Chief, how many traffic people you have, but didn't we just have a bond measure recently where we were going to add police officers? And didn't that pass?
Sort of.
Sort of?
Not exactly a bond measure, it's actually a fee that will go on your utility bill, and everybody will pay $4 a month, and we'll be hiring five additional officers, two of those will be traffic officers. We currently are down our entire traffic team, the team that's dedicated specifically to traffic. We had an injury in that department. So this will, so this fee will really, really help. In fact, the chief and I were just talking today about how to spin up that recruitment, that hiring, and get it onboard quickly, because we're just really lacking in that particular area. So, you know, we all agree with you, we need to attend to that. I'll mention that about, I'm trying to remember exactly how long it was, eight to 10 years ago, we looked at implementing some red light cameras in different intersections, and we did some studies of those, and the reason you do that is not necessarily to make revenues, but you're right, when you have accidents associated with red light running, they typically are bad accidents, because you have somebody going very fast hitting somebody directly in the side of their vehicle. So it doesn't happen often, but when they do, they're bad. And so we looked at that, and we studied it, and the data did not prove that there were enough at that time to warrant putting up red light cameras, but that's something that we may want to think about at some point in the future in very select intersections that are high volume. But I hear you, the chief hears you, and we're working on, now that that fee passed, we're going to spin up a recruitment as quickly as we can, and that's the first piece of it, is the traffic team that we're going to put back together, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, but it can't happen any sooner.
I know, I know, I agree, absolutely.
You know, if you're talking about cameras, probably Lock Haven and River Road would be a good spot, because you see a lot of people flying through there, especially when the school's growing, and you've got 10 or 20 kids trying to cross the street, and you've got cars that are not paying too much attention to the kids. And, you know, my kids all graduated from McNary, so, like I say, I've been here 40 years, but it seems the last year it's really getting, really getting bad.
Yeah, traffic is definitely, there's been a noticeable uptick in traffic, you know, in the whole Portland to Eugene area, but I've noticed it here as well, I agree with you.
Okay, well, that's the only thing I wanted to bring up, was just, I'd like to see a little bit more done as far as River Road goes.
You will. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions? We really appreciate you coming. I absolutely agree with you, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to, through the fee and the hard work of our police department, be able to really get after this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wanted to speak to the council tonight under public testimony? Before I go racing on again? Okay, then we will go to the public hearings. The first one is item 7A, Casa Amigos Restaurant and Cantina Liquor License Application. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 27, 2017, the city received an application for a new liquor license for Casa Amigos Mexican Restaurant and Cantina, which will be located at 5005 River Road North in Kaiser. The application is for a full on-premises license, and the applicant was Angel Ramirez. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, a notice was published, and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the proposed establishment. Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicants, and in addition, the Kaiser Community Development Department finds the location of the proposed establishment to be properly zoned and has no additional comment on the application. It is recommended that the public hearing be open to allow testimony from the applicants or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. It is further recommended the city council recommend approval of the application for Casa Amigos Mexican Restaurant and Cantina under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and that recommendation will then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for their final dispensation. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if anybody has any questions on the staff report. Council Ryan?
Thank you, I have a comment, Madam Mayor. I think out of all the restaurants that we've welcomed to Kaiser and are continuing to grow with, this is the one I'm most excited about. They own Los Dos Amigos on Lancaster Drive, their food is phenomenal, they have a lunch buffet, they're wonderful people, they'll be a great asset to our community, and they're excited to come. If you haven't stopped in and seen where their location is, they're doing all the tiling, and they'll have a separate lounge with an actual fire pit in it, and they're really excited to come to Kaiser. And for the record, I'd like to note that he had a name change to cooperate with a competing business locally, and he willingly changed his name so that it wouldn't be a problem to a competitor, and that was not their plan, and it was already in writing and established, and he did that out of the courtesy of, you know, just being a good neighbor. I think, I'm excited to welcome them to Kaiser, let alone that their food is phenomenal, so, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak to this issue? I have nobody signed up for the public hearing. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. I move that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for Casa Amigos Restaurant and Cantina Liquor License Application under the guidelines established by ORS 471. 178 and the ordinance of the City of Kaiser, and then forward that information to the OLCC for final approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for Casa Amigos Mexican Restaurant and Cantina under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and forward that recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. That takes us then to item 7B, which is proposed Kaiser Development Code text amendment, section 2.309 landscaping requirements. I'd like to open public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown.
Before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the landscaping section of the Kaiser Development Code, that's section 2.309. And this was generated to correct some issues that were part of our code. For a long time, for example, we have been able to offer to developers the option of significant tree removal and replacement. The code requires up to two inch caliper trees for every significant tree that is removed. We have been, because we developed a process, we have been allowing developers, if they cannot accommodate those trees onsite, to pay into an off-site tree replacement fund. This text amendment clarifies that process. It allows that to be part of a regular processing of the application, and at the same time, we are also then correcting some other issues. It went to the Planning Commission on July 12, 2017, this year, to consider these changes, and it's forwarded to you with a recommendation of support, with, they made some significant changes. And part of this, and basically there are three specific issues that are being developed here. It lowers the threshold for requiring compliance with landscaping requirements, including parking lot trees, to include interior remodeling over $100,000 in value, regardless of exemptions found in the design standards. Interior remodeling is currently exempt. So we've run into this actually more than once. We've had some major remodels, and yet, because interior remodeling, even though they have gone from wall to wall, in some cases, our current example, they've even removed walls, but because it's the current footprint, and it's considered interior, they've been exempt from any kind of upgrading of the landscaping, any kind of compliance with the parking lot tree standards, all of those kinds of things. And we're talking about remodels that are millions of dollars. This text amendment would make clear that in those cases, those major remodels, they will be required to comply with the landscaping standards. It also clarifies this significant tree replacement process and the allowance for off-site tree mitigation paying into the fund. It also, and this is significant, adds a requirement that 1% of the project cost be dedicated to onsite improvements for amenities such as street benches, water features, or art. These are public amenities, and we are proposing to you that 1% of the development cost be dedicated for establishing public amenities. We feel that it's important that these businesses, when they're making these kind of major improvements, should consider their kind of community impact, and should consider their obligation to raise the standard and to raise the level of improvements for our community as a whole. Now this would apply to commercial development. It would then also provide, as was raised in the Planning Commission, if there's a smaller improvement that would happen, then there was a concern by one of our business owners, that what happens if they don't want to maintain a public improvement? And so the suggestion was that we, in lieu of them actually installing a public amenity, if it's a small scale, or if there's a site constraint of some sort, that that amount be contributed to our public art fund that could be used elsewhere on River Road to, again, raise that level of amenity for the public, for the general public that... to, again, raise that level of amenity for the public, for the general public that we are all part of in this community. And so this proposal then would suggest that one percent of all commercial, either remodeling or new construction, be set aside for creating public amenities. Originally, we had a minimum threshold, but the Planning Commission, after a lot of debate and discussion, felt that it was important that this would apply no matter who you are or what level you are, because one percent on a small project is a matter of a couple of hundred dollars, as opposed to a multimillion dollar would be, of course, a more significant amount. The intent is, if you have a large project of that scale, that there would be, there would be opportunity to create a public amenity, and you could do that on your site, and you could indeed create something that would be of benefit to the entire community. Not just locating your business here to operate a business, but to be part of the community. So that is, that is the specifics of the proposal. You'll see there are a lot of wordsmithing items in here, a lot of corrections to try and make it read easier and more straightforward. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions? Council Reed.
I was curious about the oversight for this landscaping, particularly the water features and art and so forth. It says in here that it's subject to type one A review procedure set forth in section three point two, but I don't think we had that part as part of this packet. Can you just really briefly just tell us what kind of oversight there is, as far as, you know, if they're public amenities? Clearly, the city has some kind of say in if we're going to.
Sure, sure. So type one A, I don't have my code in front of me, but basically, type one A is through the building permit administration process. So it is, it's an administrative approval, and it would be then subject, though, to appeal, and it could be challenged. According to the, I believe that that goes to the hearings officer, one A. Shannon, help me. Yes, so one A would go, an appeal would go to the hearings officer. They could state their case to the hearings officer, and if they so chose, they could even pursue an appeal of that decision to the city council. So it's not, it's not a public hearing, per se, but it is, it's an administrative decision that then is subject to that challenge and that avenue.
Okay, thank you very much. Council Anderson.
Thank you. What is the definition of public amenities? Because I didn't see that in there, and I did not have time to see if that is defined elsewhere in code.
Well, we give examples of what that would be. It's basically public improvements that are directed there are improvements that are directed to be enjoyed by the public. They would be site furnishings, they would be water features, they would be things that are not necessarily part of the profit statement, but it would be something that would be an amenity that would be enjoyed by the public. So it, and we intended to create some flexibility, depending on what that might be. Maybe it's an open space, maybe it's a small plaza, maybe it's simply something decorative, like a piece of art, those kinds of things. So we've, we've included those lists of things such as, but obviously, it's not going to be, it wouldn't be sufficient to come in with, here's a few junipers and an elm tree, and we're going to call that a public amenity, because that's your minimum, that's your minimum landscaping requirement to begin with. This is, one percent is going to be over and above the minimum.
So I have a question for you on the public art piece. That one, we run through our Public Arts Commission, and there was no mention in here of the commission, but we established the commission so we wouldn't have council oversight of art content. But this would be a case where the business is selecting the art that goes on their property, rather than it being public art. So we're requiring them to do something that we would have no oversight over for a public amenity, but on private property. So, you know, with the public art program, we've been clear that that is through the commission, and we have a means by which that they do any sort of conversations about content. There's nothing here about content, and as it should be, because it is not something we are going to be administering. But are there going to be design standards, are there going to be community standards on this, or is it whatever y'all want? I'm not sure what the oversight is here for the art component.
Sure. As it's established now, and as you well know, that the deciding art and what is good art and what's not good art, it gets to be a little tricky. So we intend to let that be an option that the, that the business would choose to do. Our only, our only role would be to simply justify the value of that, and is it, does it meet that dollar requirement? So we don't intend to have that kind of oversight. We don't intend to say to an individual business, let's have you go through an approval process before you choose your work of art.
So Nate, just out of curiosity, so if you're, just as an example, let's say you're a gas station, really large gas station, and you're going to build a multimillion dollar gas station, for whatever reason. And so you put, you put together a fairly significant public amenity, which is a plaza and a piece of art, and that art happens to look like a gas pump with your logo on it. Is that art?
That would be probably something that would be considered as a sign.
Well.
And not art.
If there's no oversight, how would we know that?
Well, we do have oversight through the, through our sign program. So if it is something that is intended to convey a message of the business, then that counts towards their signage allotment, and that would not count as public art.
Okay.
We've actually had that issue.
Had that happen.
That's why I asked.
We've, we've had that issue, and quite honestly, that's why our starting memories, precious memories, does not appear in front of the jewelry store.
Yeah.
So, so we've, we've.
You've thought through that, good.
Yeah.
Council Anderson.
And that's appreciated, I think, too. One question, okay, so Nate, you mentioned that this is, darn, oh, there it is, for commercial development only. Does multi fam, I mean, when you're talking about a project that's involving millions of dollars, is that going to possibly bring in multifamily?
It would, it would. It would not capture single family, would not capture residential, but multifamily, we consider as commercial development.
And is there any sort of a dollar threshold where that kicks in, or is it just on any commercial type development?
Any, any commercial. Again, we, we started by having a minimum threshold. But the Planning Commission felt like, because it's percentage-based, and it's a very small percentage, that it should apply to all, all parts of our commercial community.
There is a provision, I think Nate started to talk about it, in a small project, the property owner would have the option of just paying into the fund. So if you had a real small project, instead of doing a threshold, I think the Planning Commission was thinking, everybody should pay in a little something. Doesn't make sense to try to do a two hundred dollar something, so that could be paid into the fund. That's the last sentence in that section.
Yeah, that's section E, the last, last sentence.
Section E.
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 Council Reed.
Uh, never mind. It was covered.
So I'm going to go back to that public versus private again, because of that line where they have an option to pay into the city public art fund. And again, that goes then into the oversight of the Public Arts Commission. So they would then be, rather than selecting art or having oversight or a say-so on the, on any art that they would be funding, that would then go to the commission in a public pot, if you will.
Yes, but an important clarification, and I think it's very important, is that that's, it's just not free money. It's just not money that the, that the Public Art Commission can spend however they want. There's, this is simply the revenue that is generated. The expenditure of those funds is still governed by the budgetary process, still required to come to the budget committee, and the expenditure of those funds is still governed by ultimately you and your role as the budget committee. So there is still oversight, there is still control.
I don't, I don't think I expressed myself clearly, because I get that part. I'm still on the, the public versus private selection of art expression, which I'm getting from this would be, unless they contribute to the fund, they maintain control over the content. And I understand that in most cases, businesses don't want to be offensive, they want to engage the community, they want to create something that invites the community in. And probably ninety-nine percent of businesses like that idea, there's always someone who's got a quirky notion. And that's the quirky notion, which is where we end up with the Public Arts Commission to have those conversations on the publicly funded art. So I, I don't know how this works in other communities, because I really haven't taken the time to think about it. I've had other things on my mind, but there are other places that do do a one percent for art. And the governance of that is something I am, I just don't know anything about.
Well, let me try and put a little more context here. Currently, if somebody wanted to erect some art, and it is not a sign, a statue or something, they have complete freedom to do so. They can do so right now. They have the ability for their artistic expression, given the parameters of the sign language and all of that. They have that, they have that ability to make that expression right now. We're just trying to say that you have to make some, some contribution to the community. And if, if it happens to be art, then you can choose to do that. But it's, it's something that is for the purpose of an amenity for the general public.
And that would be only true, though, for most things that would be art, that wouldn't be here, would, would be signed, though. It'd be, it'd be within their sign constraints.
Yeah.
So I think your concern, Madam Mayor, is one that you're not, I mean, I think it's kind of an all or nothing deal. You could have public amenities, such as, you know, a water feature, benches, things like that, and just remove the public art part as part of the equation. But I don't think that we can step in and try to regulate art on somebody's private property. So removing the public art part is the easier one, if that's a concern.
It seems to me as though, and I'm putting words in, I think we're all trying to divine exactly what it is you're talking about in relation to your concern, and what I think that is, is, or the question is, if they pay into the pot, understanding that it goes through the budgetary process at some point and is allocated, does the oversight of what is ultimately picked go through the art commission?
Not if it's, not if they don't choose the fund.
If it goes into the pot, if it goes into the fund.
No, I don't think that's what the mayor's concerned about. I think you're concerned, to put words in your mouth a little crisp, about the person who doesn't choose to pay into the art fund and does their own art, and what does that look like?
What was the governance process of this one percent for art? I don't know how it operates in other cities, because I just haven't had the time, and I did not listen to the debate on this at the Planning Commission, so I don't have that background. This is something I'm not very familiar with on the one percent for art. And my concern is that we initiate something that may need to be thought through a little bit more, or maybe this is sufficient. I don't have that background to understand it deeply enough. I love public art, I love art. When we are starting to talk about a requirement for businesses, that's when I want to take a pause and understand it more deeply. So that's why I'm kind of probing with these questions, because I don't understand the governance of the one percent for art.
And I want to jump in ahead of Nate, sorry Nate. I want to make, and I know that you know this, I just want to confirm this. Remember, though, of course, it doesn't have to be art. It can be some sort of a public amenity. My, my thought is most, most regular savvy business people are not going to try to choose art. It's just too dicey. I think they're going to choose benches and water features and things like that.
There is another option. There's another option that would be government-heavy, but we would have complete governance over it, and that would be to create a public amenities master plan for all of River Road, and then collect everything in terms of a fee into a, into a pot, and then start buying those amenities, retaining complete governance. It would, it would be a lot like River Road Renaissance. We didn't believe that that, that government-heavy approach was, was the right way to go at this point, so.
I absolutely agree with that, but again, I don't know how this, the governance structure works elsewhere. So with that, A, we're not government-heavy, because I don't, I don't think that's a smart idea for Kaiser. We don't have the kind of time offered, and I don't think that really reflects how Kaiser does business. And I understand the nuance between putting in amenities like benches, trees, and other, other features that make it a welcoming place and fit into the fabric of, you know, the look of Kaiser. I understand that piece, but when you put the public art piece, or not public, put the art piece in, that's when a trigger went off in my head going, what does that look like in terms of governance?
So we have had, the Public Arts Commission has been created now for over two years, I think, and we have, we have evaluated a lot of art. Every one of these pieces of art that hangs in our hallway has to be approved by the art commission. I can tell you emphatically that with only one exception, and that was because of the title, not because of the content, but there has only been one exception for the probably upwards of maybe a thousand pieces of art that we have looked at. It is not a matter of, is, do we like that piece? Is that something that is suitable for that location? Nobody has, nobody has pushed the boundaries of propriety. Nobody has suggested that, that we hang something that would be inappropriate. Now, I understand, there is a risk. There is always. When you give people freedom, and when you allow them to make their own choices, you have a risk. However, we also want to foster the fact that we are partners with our business community, and that we value their input, and we value their opinion. And if they choose art to put in as part of that public amenity, then we will continue to foster that relationship of, of working together. So that's why we didn't choose a government-heavy approach. We didn't choose to say, you've got very limited options of what you can do, and you can choose A, B, C, or E. We, we have left flexibility in this concept. We are sending the message to the business community. We are partnerships. We want you to value your membership in this community as a whole, and we, we want to enjoy and foster this raising the bar for our community in a number of different ways. So that's why we left it flexible and left it with lots of options.
I'm good, thank you. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm on the arts commission, and I know that, that you know that, but I'm wondering if we're approaching a very slippery slope with, with concerns to calling it art. I mean, maybe we could come, I appreciate your point, and how do you oversee that? But, and it's not an art commission thing, because it's a business thing, and I respect that as well. But I think there's, there's, with some, you know, with, we've seen businesses try to manipulate and do the marketing thing and do that. And then, then you're put in a position where you have to make that decision. then, then you're put in a position where you have to make that decision, and then you are governing it. And so, how do we, how do we get away so that we're still, get away from that, still be business-friendly, still honor what they want? Maybe, maybe make a list of what all those things entail, like new trees, or a water feature, or, you know, the parks bench, or things like that. What if we gave them a list and, you know, and if they wanted to put art up, then that's a separate, maybe we just divide the, divide it instead of, instead of open the back door to it, to concerns in the future.
So, you're suggesting we remove art from that list of options?
I'm just wondering if we're, if we're putting ourselves in a position of governing art that we don't want to be, and as a city entity, it's, you know, it's, I'm just, I'm just kind of throwing it out there. It's, I could go both ways. I'm, I'm just concerned, concerned.
Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so, when I asked the question initially, you said that this, this approval process would be part of the permit process. So, if it were art, are they required to specify what kind of art in that permit process? And if so, is that, is that the purview of the approval, whoever's doing the approval to make sure to say, all right, hey, this is pornographic or whatever? Is that part of that? Or, I guess just to stop extremes? Or are they not even required to specify what kind of art if they choose to do that?
Well, again, we are, this is, these, these are pretty clear policy choices that you, as the council, have. It would be easy to say, if it is public art, it would be subject to the Public Art Commission approval. You could easily say that. And that way, that way, there would be a review process, and there would be at least a, a public vetting of the public art. And then it would come to the public art, and honestly, that's one of the main reasons the Public Art Commission was established, was to try and evaluate, to make sure that there was a safeguard and those kinds of things. And quite honestly, maybe that's why we have not had a challenge, and may, and nobody has pushed that envelope.
Well, and on, on the positive side of that, though, the Public Arts Commission has shown a great deal of good guidance. They've got great ideas, they've got, you know, a high level of creativity, and they, they have been able to bring new ideas that maybe people hadn't thought of. So, I want to flip this to the positive as well, that they can be a real asset if a business wants to use that for art, that they could be a real asset to them in choosing something that would be really wonderful for that location. That may not be that, they're strong suit, they just, I know I want to do this, but who do I ask? And that, that could be a very positive asset for them.
Sure. And that would be, that would be an easy, you know, based on your direction, that would be an easy solution to that concern.
The Public Art Commission, through the budget process, would also have the ability to take other funds that were, that had already been deposited in the art bank, and couple it with, I mean, even if it's a significant project, they may want to put up a piece of art that is beyond their capacity or their, their requirement to pay for, and may be able to cooperate with the Public Art Commission. I mean, I really, I kind of like that idea of, you can choose all of these things of your own free will, or art. And if it's art, it goes through this process. And, and that could potentially provide a benefit to them of not only publicly vetting, but also providing grant funds through that process to enhance the art that they would put up. You never know.
I'd like to look into that a little further before next meeting. If that's, if the council wants to go that way, I do have some concerns about requiring somebody go through Public Art Commission to approve the art on their private property.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Counselor Ryan?
Just to follow up to that, and it sounds like it needs more, some more looking into, but you know, we're, people are subj, art is subjective, as we all know, what we all like. I mean, some people think washers and dryers are art, some people don't. Some people think, you know, metal is art, some people don't. I mean, there's, I just, I get very concerned about leaving it a little bit too open. Whatever the process we decide to be, there should be, I think, a follow-up for concerns, so that the city's protected.
Some people think a can of Campbell's soup is art.
Exactly.
It's very expensive art, too. So, what would you recommend at this point, since that particular piece does need a little bit more looking into? Would you like us to put this aside for this session?
For this particular issue, maybe we can discuss it internally, and I can check some things between now and next meeting, and we can come back. But, yeah, we would hold the record open. But I do, and I think Nate and I would like to make sure that, of course, there's nobody to testify, number one, but also that there aren't other concerns that council might have other than this one part.
All right. So, any other issues that the council would like to discuss on this at the moment? We don't, we don't have a motion on the table yet, anyway, but this is still, still under the public testimony portion. Okay. And anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this issue? Nobody has signed up, but the microphone's open. No takers. All right. So, I would like to close the public hearing, but keep the record open? Is that what you'd like me to do?
Yeah. We, or we could just continue the public hearing that would allow people who might want to show up next time to speak.
I'm more comfortable with that as well. So, rather than put a motion on, we'll continue the public hearing to our next regular session, which is September 5th? Okay. So, I would like to continue the public, public hearing till September 5th. All right. Good discussion. Thanks, everyone. Yes, Counselor Anderson?
I was kind of withholding some comment here about this until we get into deliberation. But, one thing that I would really appreciate us looking into is rather than some sort of a, maybe some way to encourage businesses to do this voluntarily, as they are developing, as they're spending money in our community to develop their sites. I'd rather see this as an encouragement rather than as a mandate, and especially when it comes to the impact on housing. I have a real concern with how this is going to impact housing costs.
Yeah. I, I think that point is well-taken, and you're specifically the multifamily piece, because we have a lot of requirements for multifamily, and then architecturally as well, already in our code, if I recall correctly. We've had a lot of discussion on that. So, that's something to bear in mind as well. So, if people could keep that in the back of their mind for the discussion at the, at September 5th. Counselor Freeman?
I'll just let the group know, too, that the pla, I had the opportunity to sit at the Planning Commission for Counselor Parsons while she was out of town. And the commission really had some great discussion, because there's business owners on the Planning Commission. So, looking at it from a financial aspect as well, a lot of discussion about having some sort of art or public amenity, we'll just say a bench on pub, on private property. I mean, so, there has been a lot of discussion through the commission on this, and it was not taken lightly as well. So, vetted it and had really good conversation, so. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. We will move on, then, to administrative action, and we will revisit this issue.
We have one more public hearing.
I keep on jumping ahead. I think I want to go home at some point tonight. All right. Seven, uh, seven C resolution adopting updates to the City of Kaiser representation in the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I'll open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2011, the Kaiser City Council approved the City of Kaiser's addendum to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. City's plan was approved by FEMA, and therefore allows the city to be eligible for FEMA disaster mitigation-related funding. A hazards mitigation plan identifies actions that strengthen a community's ability to withstand and recover from the damaging effects of natural hazards. Review and updates to a hazards mitigation plan are required on a scheduled basis, and Marion County emergency management staff coordinated efforts with regional cities and consultants to update the 2011 plan. In order for the Marion, in order for Marion County to get final approval from FEMA, the City of Kaiser and all other cities included in the plan must formally approve the addendum to the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan through a public hearing and resolution. There's no direct fiscal impact related to this action. Staff recommends city council open the public hearing, take testimony. If there are no questions or concerns, close the public hearing and adopt the attached resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Okay. I've got a, I've got a couple of things I want to ask questions about, but I'm going to let the, I don't have anybody signed up for public testimony at this point. So, we'll go with that. I do have a couple of questions, and that would be on item MH4. This was on educational material in schools. That's on page 144 of our packet. It was on page Kaiser IV of the, of our section. We don't control that. So, it doesn't mention the school district as a partner, but we don't control materials for the schools. So, I'm a little confused how we are in charge of that.
Well, realistically, Marion County does that outreach.
Okay. But we're, this isn't our plan, and we're listed as the lead. That's what confused me.
Which page is it again, Madam Mayor?
This is page KZ4 of our, the section. Within this whole big document, there's one tiny section that's Kaiser. It has table KZ1, Kaiser Priority Action Items, earthquake. Is that the one? Nope, I want KZ4. Multi-hazard, I'm sorry. Okay, no, this MH4 on page KZ5, one more page.
One more page, okay.
Yeah. Sorry, my bad. Multi-hazard, add hazard awareness material into existing environmental education currently done in schools. And we're the lead with, working with Marion County, insert. I'm, is this through our stormwater educational outreach, or is this something else?
I, this is totally a guess. Maybe Chris can weigh in on this. My guess is it would be through the, through the stormwater people, or someone going to the schools, rather than the schools themselves. And that's why it's in this section.
Right. Marion County will provide the materials, will provide, will provide through our, our personnel that are educating into the schools, the stormwater folks, that material, so.
All right. Thank you, that clarified that. And I have one more question, multi-hazard 15, and it's talking about educate businesses and governmental organizations about the importance of developing continuity of operation plans, and says the leading organization is environmental, with a partner organization being Marion County. Two key partners on this in, just in general, have been SEDCor and the Chambers of Commerce. They've been done a great job of getting information out to our businesses on, on continuity plans and sustainability, especially with some of the Cascadia training. So, is that appropriate to add, or is that just something to note?
Very easily noted, so.
They've done some great training, and they've put that on their websites as well. So, I want to make sure that they got a shout-out for thinking ahead in that regard. Okay. Anything else? All right. So, I'll close the public hearing. This is Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2017, adopting updates to the City of Kaiser representation in the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2017, adopting the updates to the City of Kaiser representation in the Marion County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Discussion. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As some of you know, I'm kind of an emergency management dork. I really enjoy, enjoy the trainings and the information that's out there. I just want to let, I let the people at home know that, that, take a look at this, and, and I think it's, I think it's great for everybody, information for everyone. I think it's, I think it's important to note that an amazing amount of work went into this with a lot of people, and who put this together. It's comprehensive, thorough, and I found it very interesting. So, I highly recommend it as bedtime reading, or whenever. But it is worth, it is worth reading. So, thank you to all those who put, took the time to put it together. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would note, just as a Scrivener's note on page K12, communications, Bear Park is misspelled. It's spelled as, as the animal. Just saying. Oh, is that right? Okay. So, that, that correction will need to be changed as well. Sam Lick is, is listed as a... Right. So, Sam Lick is listed as a representative for the City of Kaiser, so, okay.
That was correct.
Okay, at that time. So, okay. So, this is not going forward.
This was a while going.
Okay. All right.
We will inform them.
Where was Bear Park misspelled?
It was on page K12. KZ, yeah. KZ12, under Communications.
Okay.
Counselor Anderson?
You might just check some other little items on KZ, page KZ4, P1, seismic, that little action item. It's S-E-I-S-M-I-C, sorry. The old editor cannot.
Took ten years to put this together.
I'll check. Sometimes autocorrect is auto-wrong, so we have to watch that, too. All right. And any other comments or questions? So, would that be as amended, or would that just be Scrivener's?
Those will just be Scrivener's.
Okay. All right. Further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Now, can I go to administrative action? Okay. Now, I will go to administrative action. Resolution authorizing city manager to enter into agreement for management of events rental room gazebo at Kaiser Heritage Foundation. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll ask Tracy to chime in if she wishes at any point. But earlier this year, we were approached by the Kaiser Heritage Board, asking if we would agree to take over the management of their room for rent. We were hesitant to do this, but we were able to come up with an agreement which we think will work for both parties. There's a, a cost, or a, a sharing of the revenues that covers our costs as analyzed by our finance department. And then the remainder of those revenues will go to the Heritage Center for, you know, as, as their primary funding source, for upkeep of the building. And we will basically just manage that room like it's one of our rooms, one of their agreements had to be for our peace of mind and sanity, that they adopt all of our policies that we use for managing our rooms. Identical, we can't have different policies for different buildings if we're going to do the managing. It had to be the same. Our staff had to know the, the rules of the road that they were playing with, and they agreed to do that. So, with that, we don't think there's going to be a huge fiscal impact to the city, nor do we believe that there will be a windfall to the city. We tried to cost analyze this as simply recovering our costs for managing and assigning that room. So, with that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Counselor Reed, I'm going to go to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to recuse myself from this discussion and vote, as I am on the Kaiser Heritage Foundation Board, so as to avoid any kind of ethical dilemmas. Thank you.
And for clarification, I also sit on the Kaiser Heritage Board, but I sit on that board as the city representative, and on advice from the city attorney. That is an appropriate role, both on that board and on the, and council business, to represent the city's interests in both cases. So, I have been part of those conversations, as well as this debate. So, if anybody has any questions about that, be happy to talk about that at this point. All right. Let's go ahead and put a motion on the table, and we can debate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2017, authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement for management of events rental room slash gazebo at the Kaiser Heritage Foundation.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council pass, adopt Resolution R2017, authorizing city manager to enter into agreement for management of events rental room gazebo at the Kaiser Heritage Foundation. Discussion. All right. Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I just wanted to note that this will be reviewed at six months, to make sure it's working for everybody. All right. That will take us to item 8B, an ordinance amending the Kaiser Development Code regarding section 2.303, off-street parking and loading, amending ordinance 98-389. City Manager. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, one second here while I grab that. That will go to City Attorney Johnson.
Need some paper over there?
I do, I'm using, I'm using my phone, and it's very small.
Aye. Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor, and Counsel. This matter came before the Council at the August 7 meeting, meeting for a public hearing on off-street parking and loading. Counsel directed us to prepare an appropriate ordinance, and it is attached, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending the Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.303, which is off-street parking and loading, amending ordinance 98-389.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance 2017, amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.303, off-street parking and loading, amending ordinance 98-389. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with two absent. All right, that takes us to item 8C, master plan application, Kaiser Station Area B. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown. Right after Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. How's that phone working?
Well, I mean, well, yeah. I was getting the signal, like the baseball signal from Nate, that it was going directly to him, so...
You get mixed up, maybe? A little bit?
Okay. Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor, and Counsel.
We've been rebuked.
The, the Area B Master Plan came before Counsel at the July 17 meeting. And after that, I started to prepare the order, and was looking for the TIA in this matter, and we discovered unfortunately, that the TIA for this case, on that very long evening, you may recall, to just about midnight, that was with Safeway. Well, Safeway's TIA was in the packet, and, but this one wasn't. Which was just as well as away, because there were still some questions that we had for the traffic engineers on the table, that they hadn't changed. So, I'm not gonna blabber the issue unless you guys have some questions. I pointed out in the staff report, it's the table that's very early on, the executive summary, that's the critical part of this. We wanted directions from the traffic engineer, and what the timing could be with the driveways at Kaiser Station Boulevard, and Lockhaven, et cetera. And so, after some discussion internally, we decided the best course of action, and the fairest, is to request that the Council reopen the hearing. And, and I will note, there's the mistake right above recommendation, not reclose the record, I didn't change that part. But under recommendation, to make a motion to reopen the record, accept the revised TIA into the record, and then keep the record open for written comments only, until 5:00 PM on August 31st. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? Counsel President Parsons?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I make a motion, so I move that the Kaiser City Council reopen the record, accept the revised TIA into the record, and keep the record open for written comments regarding the TIA only until August 31st, 2017, at 5:00 PM.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council reopen the record on the Kaiser Station Area B Master Plan Application. Accept the revised TIA, which is transportation...
Impact analysis.
Thank you. Into the record, and keep the record open for written comments only, regarding the TIA only until August 31st, 2017, at 5:00 PM. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Okay, item 8D. We're getting signals here from, from the sidelines, that item 8D, Kaiser Station Area A, Master Plan Amendment, to be heard by City Council. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Johnson? Just kidding. Nate?
Yes.
Government humor.
It's my turn now.
Yes.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, thanks.
All right. As you know by now, that Master Plan Amendments is not specifically governed in our, in our Development Code. I think we will be turning some attention to that at a future date. However, we have representatives from ACP Holdings LLC have submitted an application for an amendment to the Kaiser Station Area Master Plan Approval. Basically, where Kaiser Permanente is now, the Master Plan called for office space of up to 100,000 square feet. The, when Kaiser Permanente built, and again, that's an upper limit, that's not a minimum. When Kaiser Permanente built, they constructed 20,000, a little over 20,000 square feet. But, and they did not consume the entire site. They knew that they wanted to come back at some future point, and amend the Master Plan to allow for the construction of an additional office space. That's exactly what they are doing now. However, the Master Plan does not anticipate two separate buildings of this size, the reorientation of some of the, the transportation elements within the internal parking areas. And so, they are applying to amend that Master Plan, to accommodate the construction of an additional 16,788 square-foot building, that would be a dental office building. I'm not sure we care what kind of office building, but anyway, their proposal is to build a dental office building adjacent to the current facility. So, the reason we are asking you to call it up directly, similar to the others that you have done in Area C and in Area B as well, is because the original Master Plan Order has been developed after a lot of your work, a lot of the Planning Commission work, and your work. There was a lot of input, and a lot of work that was put into that process. The proposed changes are very minor, and does not, it does not challenge any of the underlying assumptions and guidelines that you established with the original Master Plan. The Council has the background and familiarity with the approval of that, of that development. Understand, that goes back a ways, and there are some new Council members. However, ultimately, it is the Council's decision. The decisions and conditions that were established with the original remain largely intact. In fact, I don't believe we anticipate changing any of the conditions of approval, it's simply the site plan. The Council is the final decision-making body, and therefore, it's appropriate that you will be making that decision. And the proposed changes will not significantly change the overall plan, stormwater, or transportation issues. So, for those reasons, we are recommending that you pass a minute motion, that would allow the Master Plan Amendment, in this specific case, to come directly to you, without the additional month delay for going through the Planning Commission process. For, it would serve no real beneficial purpose.
Thank you very much. Questions on the staff report? Seeing none. Counsel President Parsons?
So, a question for Shannon. So, you want me to read it exactly how you have it in quotations, sir? Thank you. All right, so, I move that the Kaiser City Council move that the proposed Area A Master Plan Amendment shall be heard directly by the City Council. Is that what you want me to say?
Okay. Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council have the proposed Area A Master Plan Amendment come directly to the Council for consideration. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Item 8E, surplus property report fiscal year 2016-17.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood, if you would.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. There we go. It's past my bedtime, so...
Just kidding.
A surplus property report. This is a annual report that we're required to do, to provide a listing of all of the assets that we have disposed of over the course of the year. This is a listing based off of reaching out and talking with other department heads throughout the year, throughout the ongoing surplus process that we have, where at a certain dollar requirement, we require City Council approval, which you'll see a lot of the vehicles hit that threshold. So, most of those should be repeats for you, as far as the listing goes. Things under $1,000 require city manager approval, so you can see some of those things as well. There's also the ongoing things that we have every year, such as scrap metal recycling. So, not a lot of excitement, other than we did dispose of quite a few of our older vehicles this year. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be free to answer anything you have.
All right, thank you very much. This is Cash Ricklinkers. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Out of curiosity, on number 15E, bicycles, was there a reason we did not donate those to something like the Boys and Girls Club, versus selling them for a profit?
I believe it's based off of the ordinances that we have with unclaimed property. This is stuff from police actions, where they've gone and confiscated things that we couldn't find the owners for.
I thought maybe it was police bicycles or something, I was confused.
No, no, this is, this is confiscated stuff.
Well, we can't resell confiscated stuff, I get that. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, this is, for our information, there is no action that we need to take at this time, according to the staff report we received. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Just a clarification for Counsel Ryan. We did end up selling those for the, the best money we could, through, through the regular process we have through government, governmentdeals.com, I believe, so...
No, I don't question that at all. I thought they were different bicycles. Thanks.
And then if people want to know how to get ahold of Surplus, and they want to look up, if they want to purchase surplus items, that was a website, that was what again?
Governmentdeals.com.
Okay, so there you go. Something new every day. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items on the consent calendar tonight. A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dreamland Skate Parks LLC for the Carlson Skate Park repair. B is the approval of the July 10th, 2017 work session minutes, and C, approval of the July 17th, 2017 regular session minutes.
Any polls? Counsel Ryan?
A, please.
Okay, I concur. Anything else? Okay, A's been polled.
I move approval of items B and C.
Second. Items B and C on the consent calendar have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Counselor Ryan?
Oh, I thought I was absent. Sorry. My, I just actually have just a clarification on the resolution for authorizing the city manager entering to the parks, into an agreement with the Dreamland Skate Land. So, is this, so we've had a lot of talk about park maintenance, the fee, the, how much it will cost to resurface, which we know are huge numbers. So, is this a temporary fix until we can approve that? Or is, or, I mean, are we doubling up here? If we're gonna go ahead and do it in six months, and we, I don't wanna spend the money twice. So, I guess I'm confused why we're spending a small amount now, and, and of course, safety's number one, but, but I don't wanna respend it in six months, if that's the direction we're going.
Right, well, and that's a good question. This is not what I would call a temporary fix. This will fix, so, fix some of the biggest issues until a more permanent solution can be created. It's just gonna, it's gonna take more than six months to come up with that plan, to collect the funding, and get the whole park resurfaced. So, the eventual, the eventual real fix is resurfacing the park. This basically gets us from now, and makes it safe between now and when we can actually do that.
Are we gonna spend the money twice?
Yes. Well, we're gonna spend, yeah, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some cost that's, that's overlapped, but, once again, you have, you probably have a year or more, possibly 24 months, before the, the full project can be accomplished. And in order for that park to be safe, this work needs to be done. This, this minor amount of work has to be done.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Johnson?
And perhaps you had the same conversation with Mr. Lawyer that I did, but I talked to Bill right after the park's fee passed, about the exact issue you raised, Counselor Ryan. And he said, these things need to be done now, and there's safety issues. And he is not certain that even two years, there's a lot to look at, in terms of that skate park for, for long-term fixes. They've gotten some, well, you saw some of the numbers that were being floated around, and Bill and his staff wanna investigate that fully. So, they don't expect a very quick, fully remodeled skate park anytime in the near future. This was already in the works, and these are some serious problems with it for safety issues, so...
It takes care of the biggest...
Yeah, I, 'cause I thought the same thing that Counsel Ryan did, I said, well, does this make sense? Are we doing, doing this twice? And Bill assured me that there really wasn't much of a judgment call there, that we needed to do these now.
So, this is gonna buy us a significant amount of time, and also make this safer, so we can keep it open, while we look at the options that would be available to us, if we want to apply for grants, if we want to look at other matching funds. This buys us time to do that, and do a thorough vetting of the skate park. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, so, you know, sort of balance it all, these aren't temporary fixes, these fix the major issues. But, the bigger goal of redesigning and resurfacing the entire park will replace these. And so, ultimately, yes, you will, this money will be paved over, so to speak, but it does get us between now and two to three years out, when that actually happens. Because otherwise, we'd be closing that park down, between now and when we actually had the funding and the design process to make that project go.
Okay, thank you.
So, how long do you anticipate that this work will last? I mean, it looks like it's, it's very thoroughly thought out, there's pretty significant work going to be done. This is going to be not just a Band-Aid gonna peel off, this is something that is, you know, professional-grade construction, that's gonna last us a good long time, if we didn't change anything else. We're good for a while, not that we want to be content for a while, but it's gonna make it safe for the users now.
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Any other questions on item A? Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of item A.
Second. Item A has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Okay, Counsel Liaison Reports. Counselor Ryan, I think I'll start with you this time.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, I don't have much. Mine's short and sweet. Great to see the activity in Kaiser, as we've all talked about a lot. I, I have just really been hopeful that all of the businesses were, will benefit from the activity that we had this weekend, and that they were, had a really successful week. For me, my art committee meeting, we met, and just a quick report, because I think it's important to update on the story polls that we have out front, and as you'll notice, you drive by there, they're bare and ready to go. We've applied for the grant, it's submitted, and we are on schedule to do our community meetings, to, to poll the kids, and bring in our youth, and find out, youth and community, to find out what that looks like, what they'd like to see, maybe, you know, everyone will have lots of ideas. And so, we have six community meetings, and I'll make sure, I send an email out, so everyone's welcome, and we'd love to have you. And then that's really just to, so that we can bring on the artists to draw the, the specs, and then to have that carved. So, it should be a beautiful history of our, of our Kaiser and our area, so... And it was a full meeting, we're out talking about our Christmas cards, and getting our holiday, I shouldn't say Christmas, I suppose, it's a holiday card that we're, we're doing again this year, and so we're gonna be taking submissions for that, from the, from the community, and we're excited about doing that again. So, those are the two things I have with art, and that's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Elsa Freeman?
I don't have much. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Traffic Bike Ways Pedestrian Safety Committee. So, we met, and with Sergeant Winnie, we did receive a grant for some additional DUI patrol, so cheap, if I'm misspeaking, please correct me. And also, just some speed patrol, I guess is a good way to put that. And then we're also having a ticket, a click-it and ticket campaign at some point here soon, right? So, just some things I think that are noteworthy as well, and because we had some funding left over in our budget, and we were able to buy another speed counter, right? Where the, and so, what, what the benefit of that is that the traffic unit, Sergeant... And so what the benefit of that is that the traffic unit, Sergeant Winning and his staff can actually go out and place those. And so that is work that can be done by them and not with the assistance of public work, so maybe those can go out quicker. And I just think that that's really nice and a nice way that when we had extra money, not necessarily extra money, but we had money left over, we put it to good use. And I know Sergeant Winning's excited to be able to use those. And believe it or not, in a couple weeks, school's going to be starting, as we know, and so we'll be meeting after school starts. I know some people are sighing. I know Counsel Reed has to go back to school. But just, you know, just to be aware that we're going to have youth in our community again walking, and just to be aware of them because they're going to, you know, hopefully be really excited to go back to school and may not be paying attention to cars on the road. And then the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association always takes the summer off, but they'll be resuming meeting in September as well, along with all our other committees that may have taken some of the time off in the summer. We'll start back up in September. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel Reed?
Well, I've been out of town, and then the eclipse has eclipsed my life, other than that, and my efforts for the city. And it's been a fantastic, fantastic ride, but rather exhausting. But anyway, again, just really happy with how that turned out. So just kind of to, my, one of my big goals for council this school year is to be able to recruit youth liaisons for all the committees. And so if there are anybody in the TV audience right now who's thinking about building resumes, getting good experience, those kinds of things, just know that we would really like to see more youth representatives on our committees and so forth. And look on our website under the Committees section, and you can find that information, or you can certainly contact me, and I will get you on that road. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council President Parsons, anything aside from the eclipse the last few months?
No, my life has been consumed. I will be glad that my phone won't be going off, and I won't get 100 emails a day, so I'm very excited about that. But it was a great event. I promised my husband I wouldn't do it again, so. But it was, we reached our goal, and so, and the culmination was this morning was just amazing, so it was worth it. Thanks.
Very much appreciated. Thank you so much. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you. Actually, Counselor Parsons, you can rest easy for, until the next one comes through in 21:08 in this area, so. You're good to go.
Like I said, I hope I don't see that.
Me both. So just a couple things that I'll note. I just want to echo what was said earlier about the incredible friendliness of the folks that live in our community. We were on our little dead-end street in North Kaiser, and I just really appreciate the incredible hospitality and how everybody kind of got together on that. So just wanted to shout out to my personal neighbors here. They were, I really appreciate being with them on this interesting day. Two little meetings. I had a conflict with the Kaiser Chamber Board Meeting and neglected, I totally forgot to ask if somebody could step in and go for me, because it was on a day I had a meeting at the same time. I could not miss that one. So however, I do have a few notes just to share with you all about that. The Board had a couple of visitors from the Sletz Tribes. Chairperson Dolores Pigsley, and then Aaron Krug came, and they gave them an update on a, kind of the proposed Sletz Casino that they're looking at constructing at some point down the road. So that, they've got an interest in working with the Chambers of Commerce here locally on that. Also, there is, I guess, an effort being launched between the Sletz Tribes and the Grand Ron Tribes to, on a joint project at Kaiser Station. So there's that. Yay. And then finally, just to express their appreciation for the city's action on their proposal at our last regular session meeting. And then finally, the other thing I would want to just shift gears over to, and that was Blue Day, that was, we had in the community last Saturday. Yours truly had a son participating on McNary Youth Football, and so it was a great day. You know, Kaiser, yet again, and McNary in particular, did a phenomenal job. Daniel Bethel knocked it out of the park again, and saw a spouse of a counselor here as part of a contingent making an incredibly generous presentation to McNary High School on many different levels. So they are really to be commended for their support of McNary High in all levels. And finally, I want to just close out by telling the chief, you've got a great guy in Lieutenant Copeland, we already knew that already, but just his volunteerism as a coach, I don't know where the heck that guy finds the time to do it, but he's a great guy and a great teacher for our kids, so really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a couple things to add. On the Blue Day, it was a great celebration that our community is supporting our students. But I want to also point out that many of the people who support our student athletes have also collaborated with McKay High School in the completion of their turf field. I am so proud of this community for reaching another high school area to make sure that all the students in this community have access to high-quality athletic facilities so they also can enjoy those benefits. Way to go, Kaiser. I think that is an absolutely phenomenal effort. This wasn't just a gesture, this was hard work on the part of so many people to be supportive of all of our students, and a great partnership. We did have a commissioner's breakfast early on. We talked about a number of things coming up, kind of post-session and coming into rulemaking. Also, they were talking about eclipse and emergency management, a great collaboration with all of our emergency management folks, all of business folks, travel and tourism. This was truly a collaborative effort across jurisdictions and businesses to help this weekend be successful. I went to the John Knox Community Barbecue. That is a church that also has a wonderful community garden as part of the partnership with Faith Lutheran and other churches with the Community Food Bank. So it was wonderful to see them celebrate not only their community garden, but also their congregation and the outreach they do in the community, both in English and in Spanish. Coming up, we've got a few more Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater concerts. I know we just came through a great weekend of music, but we're not done. So make sure you go to kra.org.com. There are still some more concerts that are being supported by and sponsored by the city to finish up the summer. State Fair is coming up. This is a great place, again, where our community welcomes people from all over the state of Oregon, and celebrates a lot of our young people, as well as vendors, kids showing animals to great piling, and on and on. So State Fair, we have the best in the nation. It opens this Friday here in Salem. Finally, we're going to have a teacher appreciation luncheon. Chamber of Commerce is going to do that once again at their luncheon at the last Tuesday of the month, I believe, and it's going to be at Log Cabin? Loghouse Garden. So folks who want to support our wonderful teachers and show their appreciation are welcome to join in that celebration. And finally, yes, fall is coming. We've got a couple more weeks yet, but to really be aware of your calendars as we click over for student safety, for neighbor associations getting underway again, fall sports activities, you know, keep up to date with that. We try to be as connected as possible, but we rely on everybody communicating so we can make sure that we know what's going on and can help each other out. So with that, I will turn it over to the city manager for other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members and staff an opportunity to bring up newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Tim?
A couple things. I thought I'd just point out, there's this distinction between confiscation and seizing. We seize property, we don't confiscate it. It is a distinction with a difference, anyway. And I'm going to correct the city manager earlier, I know he'll appreciate this.
I'm sure.
We're going to hire, we're looking to hire two lateral motor traffic officers between now and middle of January, but one of those comes out of the police fee, the other is due to a retirement that's going to happen around December. So we're still keeping with the one traffic cop, two night shift police officers, one property detective, and one officer on crew out of the police fee.
Thank you. I do appreciate being corrected on that.
I have one comment to add. I've gotten feedback from people in our community about the police and how great they were to work with this weekend. One person in particular said some people were trying to use the center turn lane as a travel lane, and people were getting pulled over, and rather than spending a whole lot of time writing a whole lot of tickets, they were instructing them, this is what you need to do, keep everybody safe, and on to the next person to instruct them to not use that lane. And they were impressed with how the emphasis seemed to be on keeping people safe rather than taking a lot of time with each individual to write a whole lot of tickets. I mean, if somebody needed one, I'm sure they got one, but by and large, it was about education and outreach and communication. And that person noticed, and they wanted me to pass it on to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Nothing further.
City Attorney Johnson?
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So, written communications, I don't have anything tonight. So agenda input, our next general regular session will be on September 5th. That is a Tuesday because of the Monday Labor Day holiday. We'll be meeting at 7:00 right here in council chambers on September 11th at 5:45. We will have our annual parks tour, one of the best work sessions we have all year. So we've got a list of the parks we'll be going to that will be published, so folks are welcome to come and join us and caravan along, drive their own cars, and visit the parks along with us. And then we will meet again on September 18th at 7:00 in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? It is 9:02, and we are adjourned.